To try to continue and, 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 uh, get this mission. I know that, uh, I know it takes a lot of staff, but we need to make sure that, that we do continue with that mission. Because right now, the Navajo people out there is really, really looking for homes. And what the NHA's role supposed to be? The Navajo people don't see that no more. Doesn't think that NHA is trying to, uh, find additional housing on behalf of the Navajo people.
Thank you, uh, Honorable So. With that, uh, let me see if we can get Honorable Slater on. Honorable Slater, are you there?
I'm here, Speaker. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I was just letting you know I was on the line. I finally was able to connect.
You, you have any questions at this time, Honorable Slater?
No, Chair.
Okay. All right, great. Colleagues, with that, I don't have anybody else in the queue for you to go. Oh, I heard Honorable Eugene So, then Honorable Vice Chair Smith, then Chairman Daniel So. Let me go on to Honorable Eugene So, and then I'll go back to you, Mr. Deish. Honorable Eugene So, go ahead.
You guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, qualification, Honorable Eugene. Request a qualification. I understand is, uh, all the Navajo census numbers is qualified. I don't know what that, maybe I'm wrong. Navajo Nation, you know, if you say qualified, it seems like that's prejudiced. To me, Navajo should be qualified, and we shouldn't use a qualification in there because we're deleting some Navajos. I don't know how many percent. So if you put qualified in there, that's, that land which automatically kick out a lot of people. That's how I understand it. So whose money is it? There's a lot like, um, um, Mr. Otto Social, not only now, there's a lot of people out there with no house. We should start with them. Instead of people that are working. That's how I see it. That's why we got all this arriving on carbon, on 19 positive, called you are living together. A lot of people in my area, Chunli, since the people are, uh, from elsewhere that are working in Chunli, a lot of people are living, uh, you know, in one house. They try to help each other. They're workers, they're, they're, uh, one that way work with. So, uh, to me, I, I don't see qualification for, if when the money is for Navajos, for housing. I question, I would like to have that defined by Dana.
Honorable Eugene So, you still there?
Yeah, I'm still here. I want a definition of qualification, why do we use it? The Navajo Housing Authority for houses.
Okay. Well, let me go back to Mr. Deish. Uh, I think there was a question, uh, from Honorable So, and then again there from Honorable Eugene So. I'll turn the floor back over to Mr. Deish.
Again, Honorable Navajo Nation Council, Honorable Speakers. Back, yes, Yataymana, oh, ah, me, Chinandajache. Mr. So, Councilman So, ah, me, the, uh, burnout. I don't maintenance, I don't the hut dollars. I, 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 I just caught nobody, I'm here. So, it is, yeah, I want to, uh, concur with you, Chinandajache. Ah, what, eh, oh. I don't know, Bennett Freeze, but I am here. I know, keep, come down, come down, I don't, eh.
Oni gi eh, an si kwegi ito. Eda olka kwegin, o, hanana, nilha ne. O kundanat, an, o, eh ya, o, chunan tla. Eh di gi tla, yo do leh ntsen. O, kwegin eh ka ote, da ishwi suzani, sinan tae kwegi. Eh gobin an tla. Mha shtadashte. Pa ni do leh eh, eh hotau eh shato bantseskes. Eh si an ni o, kwegi, na nishii. Niye baazda do leh. Eh hotau eh shato behasit do leh, ado si eh my colleagues. Eh ayta pshteh huzen, o. Mha skui aku, oyoh shkeeg o eh hanatsilte. Eh si eh ba hotuznzen do hotau eh, um, eh ansteh isha. Shato eh, um, hotau eh ni chen hasit do leh kudo. Um, Mr. Speaker said so leh, hotau eh, shato, uh, hasit do leh, ado shas ishwi suzani sinan tae kwegi. Uh, eh, teleconference eh gi. The phone system eh gi, uh, I see, namchinska. Over at the Hess Committee meeting because of the technical difficulties we lost. Quorum and we didn't take care of all the business that was on our agenda. Da da leh khit, oh eh, um. Uh, when can we upgrade our equipment to be able to, um, um, to have everybody fully participate in a, in a responsible manner? Hotau eh shato, sah ibe, kha sah an do leh, so sheha sinan tae. I'll go back on mute.
Hey, thank you Chairman So. That, let me go ahead and move on now, back, actually, let me go back to, uh, Mr. Let, let me go on to one more and then I'll come back to you, Sadeesh. Honorable Herman Daniels.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, Speaker. Yeah, kudo shu da. Ado na na kudo shunantaa, mshle negi twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council kudo, ikiha kudo. Ado hishin dahwile ne kudo. Endahati eh deba hishin dahwile ne ko. Ado na na kudo, Mr. Daigis kudo. Ikiha kudo, nishna hofunzne kudo, I see, ba ba ikiha hirlne kudo. Ado, ai ke dahonel zunakho. Ado na na kudo, bet ahni insledid, eh ko. Nko, bet ahni dekui shee da, na tani eh tchada nahat, thakko, speaker so, bet ahni eh ko. Bet ahna yo da, ayu dechni eh ko. And, oh, lahod shede eh ko. Ado na na kudo nagai dam, ba da ishi kudo, my colleagues kudo. Yeah, da, bigi ah ni kudo, ay ye ko eh. Throughout Navajo Nation, I see kudo, eh nahati. Oh, one has agi akudo, nagai dam, ado na na kudo. My colleague kudo, yijinso, oyil, ado yijinakho, overcrowded, no, eh yijinakho, ahni hotat eh ko. In, um, these communities, throughout Navajo Nation, hot eh ko, nagai, inexeh eh ki na hat, negi, I see kudo. Eh, eh nahati ko. So eh kudo, nagai dam, kalit ai ba. Kalit ai babindis, nishla, hotan taka eh ko. So ado na na kudo, ai hishneel nishu si. Hun shuanako, hishneel nishu si, oyeh, ah, teda. Na hoy dot, ah, lot en fonda, ba ba andrath kes, kudo, so eh dey tihakudo. Eh hishan mesh, dunaa eh dey, bish, ado leh, yaht eh ko, ado leh. Ido lte so yaht eh ko, kudo, ne, nezy, ado leh dam, yaht, yaht eh ko, gungbo eh. Eh hishan meshi dunaa eh dey, bish, communication, collaboration. Hotat eh gi akudo, hun shuanako, eh hishan meo. Nko, nzo nito, kudo, nagai kudo, moving forward, kudo dam, ne, nezy, kato hun shuanako. Eh hishin, eh hishna hewile ne ko, eh hish eh wuit, ahko. Nzo nito, neshin zunakho, oh, ta bantseskes, ma, kwe, eh kwegi, hold, siski kwegi. Um, with this pandemic, kwegi dam, teleconference day day, oh eh, anan tla eh esto kudo. Ba, naxar, shunsho kudo, neshto shi kudo, eshteh, da nahat, thakko eh kudo, I see, kudo eh. Eh hishna ra kudis ne kudo, I see, ben dahati eh gi. In, in western, hot, nagai dam, da, na shai gi nagai dam, anegi nagai oje, tro. Sha, tro, zabi kenat, an, aja, anegi, zunke nahonel, a, a, da, ado leh. Niche ohna nshna, kudo, nagai, ba, tcha hotzando, ado leh, be hotat eh dahitet, aha, na, ado leh. Uh, niche ohna nshna, na, eh, nagai, na, uh, eh, uh, yidin dahati, kudo, ado na na kudo, kudo, Benetfree's area, former Benetfree's area. Aja, eshto eh ye ko, nahati ko, eh kudo dam, eh si an, anshba huzen kudo dam. Um, uh, I, I see, ba, hon, zunakho, nagai, former Benetfree's area. There's the chi, ado tro, vigea ba nahati, I see, the med eh aja. Chajo pa insen ko, so aja, ado na na nagai. Manama Valley is, anja esto nagai, it's kind of like the former, it's kind of like that Benetfree's. And nagai, gwi akia, and again, it's within the tribal park, but, uh, I see, chajo pa insen sto aja. There's no power, there's no electricity, no housing, esto kudo. Kalit ai at, eh ro, dan, ki hando, eh, la, kalit ai at, eh ko, eh kudo eh. Naxar, shunabah, ba ahni tehro, la, da, danzor eh kudo, star kes, kudo, not just Manama Valley, but all over, hot eh ko. Nko, zuran, hoi, stand eh, hot eh ko, nagai dam, the whole Navajo Nation, kudo. So eh dey, I see, ba, kalit ai, ayat eh, eh kudo eh, ba ba, ba ba, ba, ado leh, ba. Ben did, nishlan fong, kaba, kudo, vshnit, ah, hun shuanako, hishneel, nishu babyga, kudo, ne, nezy, ko. So eh dey hota ba, tito leh, Mr. Speaker, sta, thank you.
Hey, thank you, uh, Honorable Daniels, that, um. Sadeesh, those comments from Vice Chair Smith, Chairman Daniels So, and also Mr. Herman Daniels. So let me go back to you and your team to respond, Mr. Dais, floor's yours.
Sinan taa, yeah. Honorable, uh, Speaker, ado Committee Chairs, nshleni do, yat, eh, sinan taa, ado Council Members, nshleni gi. Staff, so, ado, ta, shan, eh ro, da, tro, yat, eh na, vshnit do leh. Ado, uh, na iti kiti gi to, yu na, nishu te, eh ni, zon, hum, dahoho, vsh. Uh, yaha eh, eh, immediate, ba, ha, oh, three COVID nineteen, la, eh deba, ta di, ka, ne, koto, ta di, ni, ta di, no. Ado na, nishu to, tesu dey ne, uh, yaha eh, kudo, na, nishte, na, dahakha, ho. Do, bit khatahot, eh ko, uh, yaha, bit na dey, nishu to, ta di, no. Oh, hotau ba ni, kwe, ah, ne, hot, eh, eh, yaha eh, eh beni, na, eh di, uh, lahten jet. Accessibility, uh, report, ba, na, eh, deh, ne, koliya. Eh si nahidoo, na, so, ado, da shi, eh yaha, na, chosha, deh, no, ta. Uh, sinan taa, uh, Councilman Smith, eh hotau eh yaha eh, njen, na, vsh, ah, so. Ado Chairman So, do, yat eh, eh ko, di, uh, HMO building, denenegi. Eh si, asin, alo, dlih, so, eh, so, hotan, la, eh tro, bena, khatan, na, la. Nko, eh, oh, bitan, la, vsh, eh, hot, eh, kha, eh, hot, eh, si, hotau, shi, na, nishla, dey, ni. Niko, yaht eh, ho, gungba, taha, no, sunda, eh, eh dey, hotau eh yaha eh, bena, ta, ha, vsh, to, uh, na, ni, nshnenegi. Eh si, lo, eh yaha eh, hotau eh yaha eh, 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 hotau eh ho, eh kadhiltse, hanee, denachin, kudo, eh ni, kudo. Eh dey, aru akha eh ye do, eh, hithna, an, mesho, ni do, ah, ni, sinan taa, sinan taa, ro, hunan, taa. Eh ro, ni, inchke do leh, eh, hithna, dey, mesho, si, ah, hotau eh yaht eh, so, kudo. Eh dey, yaht, eh yaha eh, beharit, to, ado, da, uh, sinan taa, Councilman Daniels. Ah, ni, eh, da shi, na, ze, eh, en, a, dey, diya. Ado, on eh, na, khe, da, kha, osa, uh. Eh, ado eh, koe ba, si, kha, ro, bena, shi, mesho, ne ba, a, dey, diya, nzo, eh, what, khat. Nko, eh, eh, kha, hon, sah, khes, working together, ado, communication, denenegi eh ko. Eh, 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 na dey, di, eh, di, uh, ba, ha, oh, segi, ho, ho, an, ba, hasi, gi, overcrowded, do, uh, Benetfree's. Ah, ni, hot, vsh, eh, yaha eh, uh, aja, uh, Mr. Black, krisafi, di. Ado eh, yaha eh, uh, ba, na, dey, si, eh, eh si, eh, cha, ta, ho, dey, cha, do, eh, no, ho. Eh, cha, oh, wach, eh, hotau eh ho. Eh dey, yaha, hotau eh yaha eh, sah, na, taa, na, vsh, uh, by, and iti kiti gi, denachin, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dais. Um, to my colleagues, uh, I don't have anybody else in the queue, is anybody else out there? Wanted to speak?
Speaker, I do. Speaker, shut up, Yijinso. Go. Did you get my request?
Yes. Honorable Stewart, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Speaker. Ariyan Ishna, Nana, uh, this, um, as we have been talking about. Um, doing your concerns with the board, eh, with the NHA board, eh, and then also. What, now that you've been, um, reduced on your board. And to move forward, to cease activities on the board, since the, since the reduction of the board. Has that gone anywhere? I know with, um, RDC, I have not. You have reached out to me before to mention that. Um, I want to know if you have gone anywhere with that one, Sean, Shanai. And then also, Speaker, can we move in that direction to cease activities from the board now that, since it's only a three member? Or how can we do that, Speaker? Um, kudo eh, um, miken, and shkido leh, Nana. Salado Shanai, I'll quit it, I'll go back on mute.
Hey, thank you. Sir Stewart, let me go on to Honorable Yijinso, and then I'll go back to you to the panel. Um, the Honorable Yijinso, go ahead, sir.
Uh, one, I open up the street, one area. We had a study that was going on in, uh, Chinny area with. Uh, the housing store, they gave us the, the north side of the, in, uh, Sa, uh, Savin City. Uh, the one that goes down to, the road that goes down to the canyon. On the north side, ye, they gave us there, but they, we requested for the south side, we haven't, uh, uh, got anything yet on, on that one. Are they still doing their flood studies, flood plain studies, uh, in, uh, on the Navajo Nation, initially? I see, on, uh, cause I wanted to know, cause I really want to see our planning. Because we have a problem in Chinny with, uh, drainage systems. We have water, water coming off the hospital, going down to the valley, into the people's house. And then the high schools and the housing in that area, they're all underwater. So, that's the reason why I wanted to know where, uh, where the study is headed to. Thank you, Jo, I'm going back on mute.
Uh, let me go back to you, Mr. Dais.
Sinan taa, sinan taa, yat, eh, Nana, Honorable Speaker. Ado Committee Chairs, onana, Navajo Nation Council staff, yes. Uh, yaha eh, uh, Mr. Stewart, oh, eh, Mr. Daikit, uh, Mr. Speaker, Honorable Speaker, asked me about the, uh, Board of Commissioners. Ah, tha iti eh, oh, kad eh yaha, na, vsh, to, na, na, nahati, ye, eh, yaha eh, uh, eh, na, ta, sah. An, ah, khe, do, leh, kad, at, ish, la, at, ta, thak, at, ta, ta, na, ni, do, kha, eh, hot, eh, ni. So, eh, cha, ta, ho, dey, ni, kha, o, che, oh. Eh, yaha eh, uh, da, na, eh, sinan taa, uh, Honorable Speaker. Ado, the, uh, Honorable, uh, Resource Development Committee Chair, do, yat, eh, oh, eh, at, eh, sah, eh, iti. An, na, ten, ho, zish, ne, da, nta, ha, ta, ado eh, kha, ho, zish, ado, nha, ni, kha, ro, shahwile ne, khe, da, da, akidet, ni. Ne, ho, eh, nahati, eh, cha, ah, ho, da, ben, da, di, nish, da, di, no. Oh, it, ah, ko, eh, shik, kad eh yaha, sah, da, sah, nahati, na, na, ta, ado, kay, da, tha, iti. Ado, be, da, is, uh, to, ho. Eh dey, hot, eh, la, ho, cha, ta, ha, ni, kha, o, che, oh, yaht, eh, ho, uh, tchale, ho. Sinan taa, uh, Councilman Stewart, thank you for, for that question. Na na, uh, flood study, eh yaha, aja, uh, benan, taa, da, hon, uh, kudo, mke, nbed, nsh, je, eh, da, kha, ho, shah, to, leh.
Good afternoon, um, Honorable Speaker and delegates. Um, in terms of the flood study that's done by NHA, those are done during the environmental assessments. To ensure that, um, in terms of flooding, that construction within those specific areas, that will have mitigation. If, if constructed during those specific areas.
Ado, kad, na, eh, yaha, uh, di, ni, tchah, nshni, eh, gi, beni, na, ado, kui, eh, nde, mesh, kudo, na, ho, haz, na, to, nsh. Ado, da, ahni, tesu, da, eh, liya, ne, eh, ro, shah, dey, ni. Nko, eh yaha eh, kha, len, itin, dash, nishla, no, ze, eh, endon, vsh, kha. Nko, eh, dekui shee eh yaha eh, uh, isolate, ado, eh, ni. Ah, sah, ah, ben, dey, nahati, count, yah, da, na, na, zmla, ado, eh, shi, nshid, oh, ni, kudo, eh, liya. Kho, eh, ben, na, eh, ayun, eh, kudo, eh, on, he, thousand, do, leh, sinan taa, eh, here, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, um, with that, let me go ahead and continue on back down the queue, this is who I have, one of the colleagues, I have, uh. Uh, Chairman Rick Nez, and Honorable Otto So. So let me go ahead and go on to, uh, Chairman Nez.
Uh, thank. Hi, Honorable Speaker Damon, appreciate the work you do for council and your staff as well. Ado, Mr. Dais, that, eh, to, pardon now, but, uh, eh, kudo, and so. Nash, ni, leni gi, kudo, I, a, a, dey, it really opened our eyes. But, we were lost, as in. As in, leadership, after all the, in a couple of years, we're gonna look back and say. But, we didn't know it was gonna come, but now we know how we can take action. Eh, eh, akoro, be, be, eh, kha, di, je, oh, eh, hishin, dey, nishto. Eh, tao, shi, nished, ne, eh, se, ba, it, eh, di, ne, la. Ah, da, tsun, eh, da, di, nansun, la, ta, ta, or, da, tsun, kese, pa, to, ba, ya, dey, ko, da, di, ne, la. Oh, shadi, oh, nsn, son, da, ta, da, ni, tsun, kudo, da, tsun, sun, la. So eh, she, be, na, sah, ha, she, Facebook, eh, gi, je, ha, she, hush, da, da, hush, da, shnot, eh, ha, ha, she. Eh, ye, da, da, ha, ni, to, di, hot, ad, never, ka, ash, war, no. She, ro, eh, ben, ye, esh, eh, da, she, oh, shid, ne, sh, ba, chajo, pa, eh. Bantseskes, to, kha, it, ah, eh, yah, di, be, haz, ah, ni, ki, eh, jo, cha, ya, go, eh, ben, eh, nishto, nished, ne, eh, ba, be, kha, di, le, wash. Akwa, tsa, agit, eh, shi, eh, la, eh ko. Sha, by, notlers, be, sdes, eh, o, englen, za, da. Kudo, hjo, ntsikis, go, eh, kudo, eh, yid, eh, deit, eh, go, chun, eh, la. Akon, eh, nde, di, bamaklers, be, yon, eh, sdes, eh, go, do, eh, ntsikis, oh, eh, do, hjo, it, eh, da, ta. Esh, eh, ntsikis, oh, eh, nsa, go, ho, ah, yid, eh, deit, eh, na, hal, la, la. Eh, ro, ta, go, dey, eh, do, do, hjo, kha, it, ad, ah, khen, chile, go, ob, eh, hal, ba, la. Ni, na, ha, ta, shi, ho, ra, ta, nson, la. Nle, inza, eh, god, kui, na, kha, gosh, dun, eh, eh, ista, eh, di, sel, eh, di, sel, gila, kro, be, kha, eh, nahwite, ah, go. Nahat, ah, gi, na, nishida, di, ne, la, ne, go, zus, nde, nde, di, gish, eh, kro, nished, ne, eh, ba, eh, eh, ro, ni, tsun, la, ah, ni, hot, eh. Ako, dek, len, eh, na, na, kha, go, hot, eh, kha, it, ah, nahat, ah. Ah, da, kudo, aja, ta, ta, ah, tchon, nished, ne, ho, one, be, hol, no, ro, leh. Di, no, ba, eh, ti, oh, esh, kha, eh, che, oh, shi, to, ni. Eh, da, ta, kha, it, ah, eh, ba, hon, eh, nahat, ah, shi, eh, 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 da, ta, ye, ne, da, li, gen, hjo, ba, nshah, eskes, to, hjo, na, be, ki, at, ki, ko, eh, sah, eh, tl, eh, ko. Asha, ko, eh, ashah, to, eh, di, list, additional, taa, Mr. Dais. Eh, ne, deh, nda, aja, eh, ni, ya, do, do, ro, ho, ho, t, eh, la, n, zin, she. Hot, ah, hush, eh, deh, sh, li, lo, di, kro, na, t, ah, ni, sh, kha, na, t, ja, ho, di. Nle, je, bish, da, di, ta, n, zon, oh, shi, nahat, ah, kud, no, shi, nan, taa, so, it, gird. Ah, ne, na, nshna, ne, li, ala, na, nsh, ye, go, nta, shi, deh. Kudo, ah, ni, tsch, kogo, be, la, eh, tl, oh, eh, esh, eh, do, ne, la, di, deh. Ni, sula, tso, eh, pesa, da, yo, ke, ha, ni, sula, ta, ta. Eh, da, ta, eh, ho, one, da, ta, yo, ke, ha, no, ba, ra, ha, ne. Ado, eh, da, ta, di, pesa, oh, yus, n, el, net, leh, inexeh eh. Eh, it, ah, ral, esh, kha, di, je, ho, be, so, chui, do, eh, nished, ne, ho, one, be, ra, ha, do, nle, kub, eh, yaha, da, ha, do, ts. Ako, do, hun, na, al, sah, ho, one, gona, na, ist, ha, ro, ke, ra, ha, ta, eh, da. Eh, ga, kosh, she, pesa, sune, ndeit, eh, deh, so, I see, oh, hun, tcha, ta, na, hal, la. Ako, sinan taa. Eh, dey, kro, board, eh, ban, al, khit. Ako, di, di, gi, oh, ah, hush, ta, already, she, belik, na, t, ah, eh, bi, ga. Di, ka, eh, 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 plan of operation, be, ha, dit, eh, ki. Eh, yaha, Speaker, do, the President of Navajo Nation, do, one member of RDC, eh, yaha, they're gonna be the interview committee. Oh, bantseskes, go, eh, RDC, ba, deh, ah, eh, ha, da, na, hun, eh, ne, do, nash. Di, oh, ba, hon, kala, hot, ah, kha, it, ba, ba, kha, it, ba, ba, kro, na, ha, ah, oh, 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 na, tso, st, eh, ne, go, to, eh, ash, ho, ra. Nahat, ah, it, eh, la, kro, na, tso, first, na, na, da, be, la, ni, it, la, na, snama, na, snama, ha, no. Le, la, taa, ne, la. Ako, di, oh, bantseskes, oh, nshin, sah, ah, ne, tsch, kro, shnan, taa, yaha, da, ha, di, eh, gi, beda, it, eh. La, ra, da, na, be, vsh, eh, da, la, tchi, eh, gi. Ye, ne, hich, ah, da, hash, ke, hush, it, ah, nish, hwo, ho, ta, na, t, ah, ni, da, na, chod, da, da, nshid, eh, na. Nishia, hot, ah, ba, hon, n, zon, shnan, taa. Ntena, ntena, eh, do, kro, ben, shun, sah, khes, to, hjo, da, ha, do, ne, la, gish, eh. Ah, aja, deh, si, eh, ro, be, khan, hiltse, ho, eh, so. Eh, dey, hot, ah, ba, has, sit, o, leh, uh, Mr. Dais, ado, Speaker, do, shnan, taa, na, shleni gi, Honorable Members of Twenty-Fourth Council. Ado, shi, eh, di, pesa, gish, eh, ah, ni, hjo, na, sn, kro, be, sah, eh, tl, eh, esh, eh, da, do, ne, la, eh, she, eh, ah, na, tso, dey, nshid, ha, la, ro, leh.
Thank you Chairman, uh, let me go ahead and go on to Honorable Otto So, and then I'll go back to the panel. Honorable Otto So. Honorable Otto So. Once, twice. Three times, let me go on then to Manager Charles Dugan.
Thank you, Speaker, and now, thank you for allowing me to answer, or to ask a second question. Um, Mr. Dais, I kinda had to go back and think about how, um, we greeted ourselves before, I believe, um, Shanai. So, um, that was from my recollection, so I just want to say, yah, eh, Shanai. Um, Otto, thank you again for answering the questions and just, uh, the transparency right now and, and making it clear what direction you're going. And I do have to say that, a, as my, um, other brother stated, Honorable Rick Nez. You know, you kind of stepped into something that, um, you know, is, is complicated. And, um, and I know that many of our directors are, are in that same situation. It's always a question of, you know, having, uh, to make changes. So I want you to know that, you know, that I support you, um, and I hope that we can work together to address the needs. For homes here in Shiprock and, um, for, not only those who are, uh, who meet the income requirements. But also to, to bring homes into the Navajo Nation where, where people will have a place to, to, to go back to. And I say that because when I moved home, back to the Navajo Nation, I didn't, I didn't have a place to live. And, uh, and Russell Begay was the first and only president who kept his words. When he said, those of you who are educated, come home, work for the nation, and we'll help you. He kept his words. I came home and I went straight into being a prosecutor, but I didn't think qualify for homes on the Navajo Nation. For three and a half years now, I've been waiting for a home site lease and nothing is happening. I do want to live here on the nation, a, and I currently am living here down the farm road in Shiprock. Thanks to a constituent of mine who is renting her home to us. But there are no homes for people who don't meet the income requirement. And I've often questioned how NHA is charging, um, uh, rent. When the homes, when the money to build these homes were based on the, um, data provided to the federal government. Saying that many are actually, all of these people were, um, falling within the income requirement. And then I also questioned, where does that money go? So you collect rent, where does that money go? Does it go back into NHA to provide maintenance? Um, I, and I, I'd like to know, you know, how that, how that works because. Again, you know, we have many people here on the Navajo Nation who don't fall within the income bracket. And, uh, it's very difficult to find homes here, which is why, you know, which explains, you know, some of the reasons. Out there for, um, families living together and, um, how they are, you know, you have multi-generational, um, you know, homes out there. Where, uh, families are, are kind of crowding in, in one home. Um, so that's my first question is, you know, what do you guys, what are you guys doing with the rent that you are receiving? And then my second question is, what is your plan for providing homes to those individuals who, who are outside of the income bracket? Um, you know, I know that they built, uh, one of the, uh, the subdivisions there in Winter Rock. Um, and they, they sold those homes to people, but I'd like to see something like that here in Shiprock. And I, I, and I'm asking, you know, as far as, um, having to provide homes for, uh, professionals. The third thing is a home for Department of Public Safety, uh, and how, uh, that has been, um, working out. When I was a prosecutor in Crown Point, I was, um, commuting every day from Shiprock to Crown Point. I did try to sit down with NHA to see if I could rent one of the homes there, uh, in Crown Point. But I was told that, uh, my rent would be over a thousand dollars a month, uh, because of my income. And I wasn't making very much, um, as a prosecutor, so I was a little bit surprised to, um, you know, to see where I fell within the income brackets. And what my rent would be, um, for the home that they were giving me, even though I requested for a smaller home, there wasn't anything. And that was the only home that was available, so maybe that was the reason why. But it goes back to the question of those who are in public safety, prosecutors technically fall under, uh, DPS. We do have a badge and we do work, um, side by side with police officers and also, uh, criminal investigations. And then also at the federal level with other attorneys and, um, and, uh, other people at the federal level, under the department, or under the, uh, public safety realm. So that's another question I have. Last is, I, I, I want to know, how can we assist families who, whose homes have burned down? Um, in two thousand and seven, Christmas Eve, my mom and dad's house burned down. And the fire department was there, but they couldn't tap into the fire hydrant that was fifty feet away from my parents' home. Because there was no water. So, we all stood there and watched as my parents' home burned down. And it was very traumatic. And to this day, you know, I, I know that, that this is probably gonna come off awful, but I can say this because I experienced it. We did try to, um, go and, and ask for assistance. We applied for a grant for my parents, I applied for a grant. And I was told that, that they could not, they could not, uh, uh, they couldn't give me the grant. Because the Navajo Nation is the only one who could actually ask for grants and they could, they were the only entity that could receive grants. because the Navajo Nation is the only one who could actually ask for grants and they could, they were the only entity that could receive grants. So I tried to work with NHA to see if NHA would allow us to apply for a grant so that we could try to assist my family, my parents, my elderly parents in rebuilding their homes. At the time, NHA, um, said no, that they don't do that. So in my opinion at that time is you have people who are willing to help themselves by applying for grants or looking for outside sources to help. But, you know, we ran into the problem with NHA and a lot of the red tape. So we decided to go a different route, and we decided to, to pull all of our resources and to try to build my parents a home. And we then ran into problems with NQA because NQA said that they could not, um, build, we could not build a home on the same lot because of the electric lines that were built, that were put in place after my parent, my, my parents' original home was put in place. So to date, my mother, um, is in her seventies and, um, she still, you know, her, her, the, the only home that she has right now is a hogon, no running water, uh, to that hogon. And my mother is elderly, she requires, um, you know, having to go to the bathroom and, you know, having something nearby. We did call in DCD, we did call in NHA, you know, we did try to see if we can have something worked out with NQA and, and none of that, none of that happened. And today I just met a family that, um, you know, their house burned down this weekend, this past weekend. And the elderly woman cried and said, "We have three more nights at motel six. What am I gonna do after that?" So we have families here in Shiprock, and I, I counted, uh, in March, we have eleven families right now whose houses have burned down in the last ten years who continue not to get any type of assistance. And I know in your presentation you did talk about burnouts and what you guys are doing, um, but I think that that's something that, you know, really needs to be addressed because I know that as delegates, we do have people in our communities who, you know, home, who, who we know, you know, where homes have burned down or maybe they're weather related, um, and then some homes that, you know, the structures are not very, um, secure. And we, we walk into these homes, sometimes we see what, you know, the, the way that our people are living. And, you know, when we refer them to NHA, you know, because of a long waitlist, you know, it makes it impossible for some of them to, um, to get into a home there at NHA. And I will tell you that, um, my dad passed away two years after his home burned down. And for almost a year, my dad slept in his truck because he was so stubborn, he didn't want to leave his home. He slept in his truck or he slept outside under the tree. And it was heartbreaking to see. And I see these families whose homes have burned down, and I know exactly what they're going through. So I wanna know what your plan is to help assist the families in our communities whose homes have burned down or who have been even blown away because of the winds here on the nation, or some of them who have been struck by lightning and, you know, all of these natural disasters that have taken these homes. So I'd like to know what your plan is for that. And hopefully, as I stated, you know, we, I, I'm willing to work with you. I'm willing to, to help NHA to help address the needs of our Navajo people, if that.
Thank you for that, uh, we're gonna turn the floor back over to Mr. Dayish and your team. I know that we had, uh, questions from Chairman Dayish and Madam Chair Charles Newton.
Honorable Speaker Damon, Honorable Committee Chairs, Honorable Navajo Nation Council Members, Staff. Yat eh na na oh. Oh, loh shkona, zah, kitah shneh, eh, eh shnaan ta. Ah hot ah, shino, ye shiktaha chen neh, oh, ah ne, ah de, noh, ye dah, noh, eh yeh ha, oh, nezad. Be kahodah on, ni shahok, ah ro on da kono, ah, eh yeh ha eh, naahod, eh da da noh. Eh ba, yade, ki yi, shish pa sheh be shahoh, ah, eh yeh ha eh, twenty-two point three million. Halit ah, eh yeh ha eh, peso, chuidill eh, doh, IHP, nah, be kenit, ah ni gi, chidet noh. Eh eh yeh ha eh ben chilah shis neh. Ah ro on da bozah, eh doh, na na, klikna da hui neh. Eh roh shikya, eh ho on, shes kes, eh sheh eh, eh yeh ha eh, Chairman Nez, yat eh na na oh. Ah ro eh, ah, shikni tahui neh, ah, xah, nahad noh. Eh se eh yeh ha it, ah sohro, jion, koi, thohon ta, ah, ad, yeh ha nah, chiyade, eh shi tahui neh. Eh yeh ha eh, hyo, shikni deh, neh soh, ki ba, eh it, eh gi, yat eh, oh, leh, sah, noh. Ah ro bahin, ri gi doh, boor, sunnelegi, eh roh sheh, nahab, eh da, oh, tha, roh, koon, sabi da, oh, shish gi. Ah ro, otun, leh gi, tha, roh, ucheh da, oh, shala, ah, oh, neyron, mi ke, mi pliro leh, ah, nee, neh, na, neh, loh. Ah ro on da eh, kin da, neh, ki, koh deh, orientation, da, neh, neh, ba, kajina, ah, be, haz, ah, ni gi, be kahodah, neh, shigi. Ah ro eh ba, yada, chi gi, huh, da, haz, eh gi, eh, be chida, gi, tha, ah, roh, sheh, da, eh, na, da, ha, gi, tha. Eh ko, eh hot ah, ye, eh yeh ha eh, sah, eh, yat ki gi, shid yat eh, Chairman Nez, ah, ne, eh yeh ha eh, na, ah, na, ah, ah. At ah, eh yeh ha eh, ne ke, ben, neh, pliro leh, koh. Ah roh, be, ah, ne, doh, ah, ne, yat eh, ah, ne, ho, eh, oh. Ah ro on da, shikke, ju, doh, eh roh, yat eh, uh, Councilwoman Mu, yat eh, ah roh, kehegi, doh, eh hot ah, eh yat eh, eh da, eh, si, neh, roh. Eh hot ah, eh, eh, ho, zen, ah roh, khah, si, chieh, oh, noh, nah, si, ki, oh, huh, bi, ita, ho, eh, eh, gi, ah, deh, kiktaha chen neh. Ah, ah, ri, ke, da, hui, eh, oh, ah, ne, ho, eh, na, ah, ne, deh. Ah ro on da eh yeh ha eh, atah, oh, tha, gi, doh, ah, ne, ho, eh, ajene, yishna. Eh beni na, eh yeh ha eh, ko eh, bah, ho, ne, eh gi, ba, ah, han, soh, ye, eh, on, shes kes. Ah ro on da eh yeh ha eh, yat, ah, huh, klikne, ne, shoshin, be, nah, si, ki, oh, leh. Eh hot ah, ye, nahab, on, shes kes. Ah ro di peso, yeh ha nahin, deh gi, be, naite, ki, gi, eh, yeh ha eh, di, be, operating costs, be, loh, gi. Eh eh yeh ha eh, ah, eh, nahin, deh. Ah ro on da, ko eh, doh, be, haz, ah, ni gi, nah, ha, sah, deh. Ah, eh, da, be, oh, ne, shah, noh, eh, da, oh, on, ba, da, di, leh. Eh hot ah, ye, eh yeh ha, ki, na, meh, si, deh, ne, zen. Eh ko, di, na, kene, zen, ah roh, yeh ha, ne, deh, da, eh ko, eh, mi, ti, ah, boh, oh, si, neh. Eh hot eh, sheh, ah, khah, eh, da, eh yeh ha eh, be, la, si, khah. Jeh hot ah, eh, on, se, deh, ke, soh, na, nah, da, hui, la, ah. Eh ko, eh re, hot eh, la, shid dey, eh, eh, sheh eh, shnan ta, or ah, eh yeh ha eh, na, naite, ki, doh, ho. Halit ah, eh, la, halit ah, eh, peso, na, soh, da, cheh, hot ah, be, ho, zen, neh, ho. Ah ro on da di, uh, peso, ah, na, ah, deh, eh, ni gi, ta, eh roh, ta, eh ba, ho, ne, eh gi, ah, ta, ho, ne, eh gi, ah, eh, ki, doh. Eh roh, eh yeh ha, nah, soas, da, hada, di, gi, ah. Eh hot eh, ne, shenesh, ji, sunnelegi, eh, kene, na, ah, eh, yeh ha eh, di, huh, eh, nah, so, da, neh. Eh ko, ka, eh yeh ha, ay, shis, khah, si, khah. Eh beni na, eh, di, boor, ba, yada, chi gi, hyo, beni, khah, da, chia, yat eh, ho, nah, da, da, shish. Ah roh, sheh, da, eh, be, chen, hyo, be, be, tah, di, neh, ho. Ah roh, eh, be, na, da, ha, di, tha, eh ko. Eh hot ah, eh yeh ha eh, di, huh, bah, ho, ne, eh gi, koh deh, uh, cheho, soh, deh. Eh yeh ha eh, eh, da, ah, ni, kene, da, zen, neh. Eh yeh ha eh, huh, ne, da, be, koh, da, ya, ho. Ay, yo, eh, keh, nahad noh. Eh yeh ha, eh, hot ah, da, da, eh, ne, sah, noh, doh, eh yeh ha, naal soas, eh, da, da, di, ya. Eh hot eh, zenesh, ji, gi, kene, na, ah, eh yeh ha eh, eh, hot ah, eh, doh, ne, koh. Eh re, hot ah, eh, zen, 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 ah, roh, ah, roh, na, uh, public safety, zen, ne, gi, koh. Eh yeh ha eh, bah, ho, ne, eh gi, eh, ita, ta, shid, ah, roh, da, sheh, eh yeh ha eh, essential personnel policy, be, ya. Eh, ay, ta, be, it, soh. Eh sheh, eh yeh ha eh, mah, ha, activate, ishla, roh, eh, eh, hot ah, sheh, eh, ben, kah, ho, ah, doh, deh, be. Eh ko, eh, re, hot eh, la, ho, eh, hot ah, sela, da, ki, kene, ne, loh, koon, da, bozana, na, na. Eh, ne, eh, beli, na, eh yeh ha, essential personnel policy, al, ya, ho. Eh re, hot eh, la, shid dey, eh, ho, kal, eh, be, khah, deh, huh, eh yeh ha eh, naite, ki, gi, be, be, khah, ha, ki, doh, sheh, poj, yo, ba, da, hui, neh, doh, leh. Ah ro on da, di, ne, be, zen, da, huh, na, ah, ah, eh, ho, da, huh, bozanda, be, ta, ha, ha, sheh, ah, da, ne, eh gi, huh, koon, da. Huh, eh yeh ha eh, be, huh, be, zen, da, huh, ne, eh gi, eh, roh, ta, eh, ne, yol, da, huh, zen, ne, eh gi, ah. Jeh, koda, eh, 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 roh, be, eh, roh, be, ho, zen, emergency housing policy. Eh ko, uh, be, kren, ta, ho, shneh, deh, kushin, peso, na, sah, ah, eh yeh ha eh, shnan, ah, ah, si, zen, da, ha, neh, ho. Doh, doh, ah, sah, sah, ho, deh, kushin, ho, eh yeh ha eh, di, emergency housing policy, gi, eh, be, khah, ha, da, sheh, soh, deh. Eh, di, koon, zen, neh, shnan, ah, ho, da, na, ne, boh, koon, eh yeh ha eh, ah, ta, ho, da, eh yeh ha eh, be, da, hui, doh, na, shnoh. Eh yeh ha eh, na, na, da, ne, sheh, be, be, eh yeh ha eh, be, ah, shiktaha, neh, oh, ta, ho. So eh, koon, ay, be, ki, gi, ah, ne, ho, tha, ho, yat eh, oh, sheh eh. Ah roh, eh, eh, hot ah, eh yeh ha eh, akah, ay, eh, di, doh, na, na, be, khah, na, deh, shah, ni, shikhe, doh, leh. Ah, kah, ho, da, eh, hot ah, shah, eh, ne, he, ka, oh, chieh, oh, eh, eh yeh ha eh, na, ne, sheh, na, deh, ne, doh, leh. Ah, eh, ben, nah, di, doh, ah, sah, noh, shikna, neh, shigi, eh, hot ah, roh, eh, na, na, eh, noh. Eh hot ah, eh yeh ha eh, sah, di, na, ta, man, ah, roh, leh. Speaker Damon.
Sir. Okay, that, uh, let me go ahead and go back, uh, I think Honorable Otto So is back on the line, Honorable Otto So.
Speaker, thank you very much, can you hear me?
Yep, can now.
Okay, alright, thanks very much, um, I was driving in a drop zone area and I did thought that, that you guys couldn't hear me, but, um, I was in a, uh, sort of talked about what Chairman, um, Chairman Nez, uh, was, uh, talking about relating to the, uh, board. Uh, right now, the current structure that's in place, the board structure was changed in the twenty-third council by the, uh, former RDC, uh, chairman. Eh ko, I believe, uh, that, that, right now, with that, uh, current, uh, structure that's in place, it's gonna be hard to, to, to fulfill those board positions. And I do agree with Chairman Nez that, uh, if we give that, uh, if we rescind that, uh, if we rescind that resolution and, um, put in, um, uh, as a, as, as a temporary, uh, board appointment authority, council can do that. And we could get that to, um, get that, get that authority given to either RDC or give it to NAVI. Because how the old board mechanism was, was, uh, was formulated was, uh, one from each agency. Or whatever, whatever that, 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 that criteria was, that, that formulation. And I believe, um, we do need, need a board that needs to be put in place. And, uh, right now, I, I, I do support that, and that's, and that's an issue that, that, that needs to be taken care of directly. Uh, the current system, it's just gonna take a long time to get, uh, uh, board members, the, 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 the qualified board member, uh, that's, uh, that, that qualifies for the current requirements. Eh ko, open, the, oh, eh, aj, oh, oh, shlanje, da, be, ta, da, be, ta, da, uh, uh, ni, ni, soh, da, jondol, leh. Eh ko, eh, yat, di, the board, nah, neh, loh, so, NHA can, 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 uh, can, can conduct business and, uh, move forth with their, um, with their work that, that they are in charge to, to, to provide, uh, according to their, uh, policy there. Eh ko, eh, day, yat, that's, that's one area that I really would like for, uh, 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 council to address. And, um, I know we're gonna, probably gonna get a backlash on it, but we have to do something right now 'cause we have to get the board members in place at NHA. The other is that shnan, uh, um, uh, rela- relating to the twenty-two point three million, uh, uh, a- and, uh, you did talk to something about, uh, uh, alleviating some of the, uh, tenant payments and so forth. Uh, so by, by each, I guess, if you could provide those numbers to the chapters, for instance, the chapters that have NHA units there, you know, how, uh, uh, this, this to have that collaboration at the local level, lead the, I don't know, chapter, chapter, ha, sah, ah, deh. That communication, we really need to move forth and, um, establish a better working communication with, uh, or commu- or relationship with the chapters at the local level. Eh ko, eh, ah, eh, yat, ne, yil, da, ha, neh, doh, ten, eh, yat, di, 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 na, na, eh, la, di, ne, yon, di, ho. Ah, hot ah, hi, chi, ya, da, chi, doh, neh. Eh re, eh re, yeh, ne, hin, shikhe, doh, shnan, ah. Ah ro on da, eh, desho, um, I know you guys have the, uh, the, the, the student assistance for, uh, college students that live off, that, that, that go to school off to reservation. And, 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 uh, some of them qualify for hot dollars to, to assist them for their apartment rentals and so forth. Uh, the de, kap, and, shen, na, na, da, we, jish, some of these college students, um, uh, native students, rent, uh, apartments and so forth, and, um, I believe that, uh, that collaboration and that information needs to get out to the Navajo students so that they know that this program is, 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 uh, is, uh, in line or is online with, uh, with NHA and who they need to talk to and what they need to do. Uh, I did talk to, uh, I, I believe she is your, uh, she, 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 she works for that program. I don't, I'm not too sure if she still works there, there, but, mitsrahi. Eh, it, oh, oh, eh, yeh, jet, yah, ho, na, eh, ki. He said, eh, da, eh, da, eh, da, eh, da, ta, ne, he, eh, eh, jo. We need to give that information out to our college students out there, that, so that, uh, there's many college students that, 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 um, that will qualify. Eh ko, eh, 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 day, ah, so, these college students, they're gonna be, gonna be going back to school and we need to try to, um, utilize these student, um, um, dollars for housing for these, uh, Navajo students that are going to school off to nation. Eh re, ah, so, ashon, eh, yeh.
With that colleagues, is any, uh, anybody in the queue, uh, texting me? Uh, anybody texting me, is, uh, anybody else, uh, wanting to speak?
I text, I text.
Come in here, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Speaker Chairman Damon, for, uh, hosting the meeting, ah, shna, um, Mr. Dayish, um, be, ta, ne, doh, hash, shis, ne, doh, kots, na, ay, ta, na, ne, shis, soh. Eh ben, na, Chairman, eh, eh, yat, ay, keshi, da, sheh, hash, shis, ne, shnot, to, ne, ching, bashis, ching. Ah, ko, ke, di, ne, ching, da, da, to, ma, sah, ah, je, shis, na, ne, da, ta, ho, ah, roh. Wat, shinde, na, sha. I represent Reema Alamo Toh Chile. Uh, pardon, eh, this, ta, sah, sah, sheh, uh, fix, but, then, host, eh, shing, this is, shnan, ah, had, di, ay, da, da, shis, ah, je. So, this figure, we tell, next year. Um, but with this, um, NHA, yeah, I used to work for NHA for thirteen years in the Panial Housing Management Office. We took care of Alamo and Toh Chile at that time, so. And, uh, and NHA is, uh, during that time, they, they kept bringing out the policies. We're too policy-driven, we're too policy-heavy, I know. Khad, um, kind of, uh, the, um, directors, they need to start combining some of them, I don't know, hashi, la, teshi, kani, shi, da. But at the same time, it, eh, um, our, the Board of Commissioners, their makeup was a little bit more grassroots. Back then, they had housing, uh, homeownership tenant representatives from each of the agencies, um, some people and down, down below, I had to graduate them, then, na, ta, de, ta, I remember, in some of the Board of Commissioners meetings. But just recently, after, um, the, uh, ni, bay, yazi, da, ti, yad, um, to, de, be, da, noticed that the big, the makeup of the board had changed, more professional positions, uh, professionals, this, noh. Ah, roh, deh, yeh, da, fahan, ich, ah, I think from what I'm, just, what I've been hearing, personal interests took over. And so, ah, go, eh, starting, started going, um. and so, I go, eh, starting, started going, um, the opposite way, from what I understand, eh, eh, would be foul. But my focus here is, uh, when it comes to housing development, uh, can you hear everything?
I can hear you, I can hear you.
As, uh, um, don't, uh, when you're doing your housing plan, your new housing plan, and even with this twenty-two million dollars, she, eh, tani gi, just remember, there are people living out in Alamo and Tohuchile, they're in need of homes too. I was stressed that, eh, eh, ki, din, da, at the, she, she, ni, deh, eh, na, deh, ah, deh, oh, yeah, ah, deh, ni, ki, ni, ha, no. Uh, chashe, one, so, no, but, 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 no, but, um, it's my thinking is that we need to, uh, keep them in mind when we're building that plan up. And of course, in Tohuchile, there's a strong need for housing, especially the east Tohuchile area, where there's ninety units several years back. Although, kadi, uh, there's room for twenty more units, and I've been working with the, uh, housing manager there, Bruce Scott, uh, with the last adminis- temporary administration, daa hi kaah, um, uh, after, you know, um, the other CEO go. But, uh, eh, deh, na, haben, deh, toh, today, the chapter meeting, I was there today and they, it still, it still comes up that there, there's a need for housing, but at the same time, they're bringing, we're trying to bring in water from Albuquerque, Navajo water, once that happens, though, it'll make the housing development a lot easier. So, but, Mr. Deish, um, I mean, I, I've heard earlier in the conversations that you're brand new to this, I know, but I believe that they, uh, selected the right person for this position, and with their staffing, and the force support from, uh, the council, this will, this will happen, so just wanted to bring that, uh, uh, to this, uh, Chairman Damon, for allowing me to speak, thank you.
All right. Any other comments, questions from my colleagues on, on committee? If none, let me go back to you, uh, Mr. Deish, comments, questions from, uh, Chairman Hino.
Honorable Speaker Damon, Honorable, uh, Committee Chairs, Honorable, uh, Council Delegates, Staff, gets, that, eh, na, na, oh. So, she, for that, one, him, um, shenan, daah, Mr. So, ya, eh, Council Delegate So, work members, bahin, ri, ah, kaah ho, dan ha da, oh, shil, han mi, ri, na, doh, ni, ash, la, oh, eh, yon, ye, on, the, so, deh, shah, the, na, na, the, so, ah, na, na, ni, kin. Eh, yaha eh, ah, doh, grassroots, ah, doh, no, da, ho, huh, ah, taan, be, da, ho, ilan, sen, but, ah, eh, yaha eh, ni, shi, choh, eh, doh, leh, ah, ki he, ah, ro, da, shen, da, oh, taah, doh, bahin, ri, eh, doh, eh, yaha eh, ah, kui sheh preh, so, pasen, meh, oh, ah, taan, be, kaah, we, la, na, eh, meh, doh, she, huh, but, she, huh, na, da, doh, ni, eh, eh, ah, eh, doh, leh, oh, ya, eh, ho, ho, taah, we, na, na, shida, di, ni, ah, ro, na, na, uh, Mr. Chairman, Hino, ya, eh, uh, situation, na, eh, ah, ni, wo, deh, oh, eh, yaha eh, 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 yaha eh, ke, da, he, deh, no, sen, meh, deh, ho, but, ah, eh, yaha eh, han, eh, bu, san, ti, doh, eh, ho, taah, eh, ah, deh, eh, ben, eh, deh, eh, kaah, doh, ah, deh, ha, no, da, ho, ya, eh, ho, yon, ye, ho, taah, eh, she, taah, chid, na, oh. Ah, ro, na, ti, da, ho, saha, yi, doh, but, ah, ni, da, po, huh, eh, ya, da, ha, ni, ah, cho, ho, taah, doh, huh, han, eh, be, da, ti, ti, ho, ya, eh, ho, ki he, ah, ro, na, eh, yaha eh, bah, ho, na, eh, doh, ah, ni, she, ho, eh, ho, eh, yaha eh, to, meh, gi, sen, meh, li, ho, eh, ni he kaah, oh, jeo, ah, she, le, go, na, da, oh, la, yon, doh, leh, akoh, ah, ro, na, ti, ho, one, sen, meh, li, doh, ah, deh, oh, chen, deh, ah, na, ho, ah, deh, eh, doh, ah, ni, ba, da, ha, ni, sen, ah, ho, taah, she, eh, eh, ti, toho, yi, ah, taan, eh, ba, ho, sen, lan, sen, ah, deh, ho, eh, ha, da, ni, kaan, ho, eh, eh, taan, kaan, ni, na, na, she, deh, ya, taan, ah, ro, fi, ni, ki, taah, di, ya, ho, eh, yaha eh, eh, ho, taah, eh, yaha eh, ba, da, ha, ni, sen, ho, toho, yi, be, da, ho, ye, la, ah, ni, be, ti, deh, be, ti, ba, to, meh, la, to, yi, klo, doh, then, eh, be, toho, yi, jo, ko, eh, yaha, she, eh, be, eh, yaha, who, doh, toh, ha, wa, mi, ho, taah, eh, yaha eh, doh, ni, akoh, eh, dey, ya, ho, taah, eh, yaha eh, na, taan, ho, doh, eh, sah, na, na, ni, be, ha, deh, deh, na, na, ah, ki he, na, taan, da, ho, taah, ah, ro, ho, doh, na, taan, ah, ah, ni, da, ni, di, ah, ho, sah, di, be, eh, di, ya, eh, na, na, uh, Speaker Damon, sir.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Deish, that colleagues, I don't know, I don't have anybody else on the queue.
Elliot Paul Begay.
Honorable Paul Begay, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, uh, Speaker Damon, colleagues, I, uh, I, I don't care, ah, deh, she, she, doh, she, so, da, toh, meh, deh, oh, da, shenan, da, so, she, eh, Paul Begay, she, eh, ah, ro, she, 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 na, na, nishla, akoh, uh, na, gay, eh, ah, deh, oh, na, ho, ho, eh, ah, he, deh, na, ho, la, ah, she, eh, she, ka, ki, kai, ki, toho, toho, na, eh, la, na, pa, sah, be, she, eh, ah, deh, eh, ya, na, taah, ba, na, sha, akoh, ah, eh, she, eh, oh, eh, sen, sah, da, oh, doh, ha, ye, eh, na, ho, ti, da, ho, wan, la, la, na, 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 niki, oh, ha, ye, jo, ho, eh, ah, ro, ah, ho, taah, be, ha, deh, deh, ah, sen, oh, oh, shna, ki, na, shna, doh, leh, akon, eh, na, ha, eh, ah, ho, da, na, na, ha, ke, da, ti, no, da, na, ha, na, ta, eh, li, ho, doh, ni, ho, so, eh, she, eh, la, la, akoh, eh, ben, na, so, eh, ya, ti, ni, ka, za, ah, doh, eh, eh, ah, na, ho, di, na, da, be, ha, oh, si, uh, Homer Bennett Free, so, ya, ni, so, na, na, ka, go, ni, ka, ho, doh, go, uh, ni, he, na, ho, ti, huh, na, ha, shla, ti, doh, ba, ah, na, ha, eh, washen, toh, na, eh, ha, ha, toh, na, eh, ha, do, eh, has, ah, da, sen, ni, oh, da, da, ka, lo, toh, so, da, eh, doh, ni, shen, deh, ben, eh, di, be, yaha, da, she, ben, eh, di, yes, be, yaha, she, yor, she, doh, ni, da, so, ho, ho, eh, go, eh, jo, ban, sah, ka, she, po, ho, oh, eh, yo, she, oh, taan, go, ho, eh, go, she, ha, za, ah, go, shla, ti, doh, ba, ah, na, ha, eh, ah, di, oh, ho, eh, so, ah, ho, na, na, ta, di, na, eh, sen, sah, go, ho, wan, che, na, eh, ta, eh, yek, ha, da, deh, eh, eh, be, shoda, ho, eh, jo, ha, na, she, ta, ho, eh, so, oh, doh, ah, ha, ta, ah, da, di, na, ba, ha, yo, shna, ha, da, po, ka, chul, yi, so, doh, ho, ni, sen, akoh, di, ka, deh, ah, shon, uh, ke, ya, na, la, ki, ha, no, ni, ka, ho, na, eh, huh, shlanje, na, da, oh, jish, she, she, eh, ah, di, ah, ho, ho, eh, ko, ha, ah, che, oh, na, na, akoh, uh, eh, ni, be, ha, eh, go, eh, ya, Navajo, be, line commission, direct, uh, Mr. Black, she, she, na, ha, so, sen, eh, ni, ah, da, la, ah, da, eh, shon, eh, deh, shni, go, da, eh, she, na, ha, so, sen, jo, ho, ta, ban, sah, she, ah, doh, eh, doh, ah, na, sen, sen, she, 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 oh, la, uh, ho, doh, ko, doh, ni, na, na, ni, doh, eh, doh, ko, she, ni, na, ni, ho, ho, eh, na, na, eh, la, eh, la, ho, ka, ah, da, eh, da, ah, ha, ta, ah, da, ah, doh, na, deh, ah, ha, ta, ah, da, ne, ba, ka, di, shwala, um, na, na, wi, ho, da, eh, huh, in, ya, doh, lo, ho, ta, ah, sen, na, ki, eh, ya, ya, eh, la, she, ko, doh, eh, ah, shon, she, choh, eh, on, sen, na, di, so, she, na, eh, be, choh, um, di, da, ah, ni, eh, ya, di, Homer Bennett Free, eh, da, ah, ni, doh, da, ne, be, cha, eh, da, ha, shna, she, she, ba, ha, sen, I am, be, ha, na, she, I am a recipient, recipient of one of those, uh, relocaties, nishla, eh, ka, uh, ta, cho, ba, go, yeah, ke, da, ho, ti, go, na, taan, ah, doh, ti, doh, uh, ke, da, doh, li, eh, she, eh, she, eh, na, eh, doh, ta, ni, she, ni, go, ni, shna, ha, di, akoh, eh, ho, eh, akoh, oh, oh, shba, sen, doh, leh, akoh, she, she, so, ah, ha, ta, ah, da, eh, ko, da, she, doh, ha, ye, eh, eh, da, ha, she, eh, go, be, ha, da, eh, she, oh, ko, doh, shba, doh, Bennett Free, eh, eh, si, ha, yo, sen, na, na, eh, ah, ta, ah, da, na, ha, sen, she, so, leh, she, sen, ah, ro, ki, sah, we, doh, uh, I wish you well, uh, stay safe and, uh, likewise to my colleagues, that stay safe and, uh, uh, she, she, la, la, oh, doh, leh, eh, yeah.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Deish, go ahead and, uh, respond.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Ah, doh, uh, shenan, ah, begay, ya, eh, uh, shenan, ah, she, ah, eh, deh, deh, shni, ah, ro, bah, ho, na, eh, doh, uh, she, she, so, na, eh, ba, on, this, she, eh, ben, eh, na, eh, yaha eh, uh, Mr. Black, she, she, taah we, na, na, taan, ho, just, eh, be, da, ha, sen, she, ho, eh, yaha eh, she, ben, da, she, ni, she, ke, ya, deh, li, then, eh, doh, ba, we, di, oh, na, ta, ah, ni, eh, yaha eh, be kaah, oh, eh, ah, di, no, itaan, ho, ta, na, eh, eh, na, so, be, so, illi, na, ho, jo, ho, eh, eh, yaha eh, bahin, ri, eh, ah, eh, eh, ben, eh, na, eh, ha, na, ha, saha, yi, eh, co, eh, yaha eh, na, da, be, ye, eh, na, ah, ro, ah, ni, ho, toh, ni, ni, be, yi, doh, ah, ro, na, eh, doh, so, she, ho, ta, na, na, ta, ka, she, huh, shenan, ah, oh, she, doh, ah, ho, eh, ho, huh, yon, eh, she, be, na, so, ah, ka, na, di, ya, ho, 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 taah, eh, yaha eh, she, ko, doh, eh, na, taan, sah, na, na, be, ha, na, she, doh, leh, so, she, doh, ah, it's, uh, a dire interest to me, because, uh, when we were in office, we worked on, ah, ro, eh, yaha eh, ban, da, eh, ka, ho, ke, na, li, ko, eh, ye, ho, wan, doh, ke, eh, ho, wan, deh, eh, yaha eh, be, ka, za, ho, eh, na, eh, yaha eh, ho, ta, eh, ban, deh, ki, oh, ah, ni, ho, eh, Mr. Speaker.
Great, thank you, uh, Mr. Deish, with that, uh, colleagues, I don't have anybody again on the board.
Speaker, this is Elliot Slater.
Elliot Slater, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, um, thank you, Mr. Deish, my only question is, what do you think are the best ways to hold NHA accountable and responsive to the needs of the Navajo people?
Mr. Deish, I'll go ahead and refer that question on to you, for your, sir.
Uh, na, 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 ha, da, ki, toh, ta, ho, eh, ban, deh, ki, eh, uh, ben, da, ha, yi, la, ha, yi, I know that you're aware, sir, uh, that, uh, uh, we have a Indian housing plan that we submit every year, so, uh, once we submit that, we have a, uh, APR, Annual Performance Review. Eh, yaha, we, we, we want to be, uh, measured against that, and so, uh, we'll, we'll continue to do that, but we need your assistance. So, when we, uh, prepared the Indian housing plan, we just talked about that for twenty-twenty-one, we can certainly, uh, uh, work hand in hand, then, as we make adjustments throughout the year, uh, we are allowed to do that, but, uh, that way, then we address the needs that are, are, out there in the communities, excuse me. So, I just wanted to, uh, I know you know this already, and, and so I just wanted to convey those thoughts, uh, the APR, the other thing is education, you're doing an excellent job by, uh, by, by the, uh, leaders, uh, of the, uh, council, uh, the speaker, your leadership, asking for, uh, uh, information regarding our IHP, IHP plan, also, the, uh, we have HUD, we have an annual HUD monitoring reviews, and, and I know you're aware of that, and so, we, we'll continue to abide by all those things, uh, that will be, continue to be our measuring stick, and so I just wanted to, uh, uh, respond to you in that fashion, uh, education is a big part of it, uh, communicate, uh, what guidelines we have, uh, we're confronted by, and then how we can navigate through it, uh, with your assistance. So, uh, but that's how I would like to answer that, and, and the biggest thing that's a challenge to us, of course, is, and we talked about it to some extent, yeah, uh, regarding the, uh, uh, the board, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, or Mr. Speaker, sir.
Thank you.
Do you have a follow-up?
Chair, delegate, Wanika.
Okay, let me go to the follow-up by Honorable Slater, then, uh, down to Honorable Wanika, Honorable Slater, go ahead, the four is yours.
Yeah, so, am I hearing correctly that the, the ordinary mechanisms, the approval of the annual plan by RDC is appropriate combined with the follow-ups or other measurements by HUD? Um, I guess I would hope to hear some new ideas on how we can inform the full council, the whole nation, and, you know, of course, the executive branch on the activities of NHA. I think that those procedures and those protocols are, are good and are a necessary baseline, but we need to do a better job at getting out into our communities and informing the general public what NHA is doing, why, and if there are constraints, you know, how the nation is being responsive to them, so, that's my ask, is that you think beyond the existing paradigm, and I appreciate your responses, I think that it's critical, as Chanelle, um, Delegate Begay was emphasizing, that our former Bennett Free's relatives be prioritized, that those affected by relocation be prioritized and thought about because their circumstances have been forgotten and ignored for way too long, and I just want to express my support and solidarity with that, um, coming from another set of chapters within Central Agency. So, I don't expect a response right now, but I, I hope that we can imagine a new future where we're a little more responsive and expressive in all sorts of diverse environments across the Navajo Nation to our housing needs, thank you.
Honorable Wanika.
Uh, thank you, Chair, Honorable members, and members of the Namkei team, uh, ya, eh, be, di, shen, doh, leh, ah, ro, Mr. Deish, so, uh, hashit, uh, fa, ni, la, na, she, ya, eh, she, ta, ba, bashis, chi, ni, ya, ah, eh, da, she, doh, to, she, ni, da, shenan, la, akoh, she, da, la, ben, ah, deh, ki, deh, ti, ko, doh, be, ha, she, doh, leh, she, eh, um, eh, we had our meet in health, education, human service committee, and I did, so, ha, she, li, so, da, na, ki, eh, doh, oh, bila, ski, da, ah, deh, da, ah, xmo, doh, had to take care of some other business, but, uh, I worked with housing authority as a housing manager in Gannaro for, for some years, about thirty years ago, that's, kui ta, ra, ni, da, eh, se, ah, wa, ben, da, ni, shenan, ah, ro, ta, eh, ah, ho, taah, oh, the, kui sheh, is, da, da, sen, na, na, ha, eh, she, ah, ro, na, ta, ha, ya, eh, oh, oh, da, na, eh, she, na, la, la, eh, it's, uh, akoh, one of the concerns I have is those who want, that, renovation, yeah, doh, ten, ha, la, 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 eh, so, doh, 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 ka, da, da, la, la, eh, eh, so, uh, wa, ben, na, da, eh, na, shen, doh, ten, ha, la, la, akoh, eh, ka, da, eh, so, she, di, la, ro, uh, subdivision, so, eh, she, so, ba, da, ni, shenan, these, care, or home, she, get, oh, yo, uh, ta, be, ki, chi, ya, eh, she, na, la, la, na, 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 eh, so, be, ya, da, eh, ta, na, la, la, eh, da, ha, wa, ban, da, eh, lo, akoh, da, eh, da, eh, so, ha, jo, ben, ben, ah, da, eh, na, she, hashin, so, ni, na, eh, so, be, ka, di, ya, akon, eh, ko, doh, be, ha, eh, she, eh, da, eh, 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 na, na, chi, nishla, akoh, so, da, ro, ha, she, eh, be, la, uh, for many years, I worked with, uh, Home Improvement Program, so, we contracted that program from DIA, uh, Navajo Nation Contract, eh, na, da, she, ah, deh, eh, so, be, sah, ba, den, the, eh, uh, den, na, hashin, so, be, ka, na, wa, na, akoh, ben, na, span, sah, ki, so, da, eh, she, ye, go, eh, who, want, eh, uh, den, na, be, ka, da, wa, la, da, eh, eh, na, na, la, sen, ni, doh, da, eh, eh, ba, la, 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 akoh, doh, be, so, na, ta, na, hint, eh, na, oh, ba, ha, na, eh, so, da, eh, so, doh, be, she, eh, la, akoh, eh, eh, doh, doh, ba, ha, dis, sen, sen, doh, la, toh, she, da, ni, hashin, so, eh, ho, ta, oh, na, na, she, uh, ha, ki, li, eh, ho, ta, ni, na, ta, ni, ki, da, eh, so, ta, ba, ho, eh, so, akoh, la, toh, eh, so, ho, ke, na, so, deh, be, ha, she, eh, so, akoh, eh, she, eh, oh, na, ki, lo, eh, she, ko, doh, eh, la, toh, hashin, so, eh, eh, she, ben, da, ha, she, eh, I see. That's what I been. I said. So. I seen. I'm. I be. I. I seen. Like, I'm. So I don't. I have. Distance. I can't.
Thank you, Honorable Unika. That, let me go ahead and, uh, refer that back to, uh, Mr. Deish, you and your team members.
Honorable Speaker Damon, uh, honorable committee chairs, Navajo Nation Council staff members, thank you very much. I don't. I'm. I'm. Uh, Mr. Unika. Yeah. So now, I. I need. I think. I see. Listen. You know. I don't. I want to. I want to. I yaha. I can't. It's a. I want to. I quit. I'm. I got. Oh, yeah. I don't. I want to thank you for your service to NHA, too. That. I don't. I'm. I'm. It's not. I. I'm. I know. I had. I want. I want. Yeah. I see. I. Aye yaha. I need. So now, I did. Me. Now, I. It. Oh, it's not. I be. Ben. I have. So. I don't. Yeah. Uh, I see. Yeah. I'm. I. So it's not. I don't. It's not. I yaha. I should. I be. I'm. See. So now, I. It's not. I yaha. I'm not. Then I be. I'm not. See. Like, oh. Uh, thank you, Honorable Speaker Damon, sir.
Thank you, Honorable. Or thank you, uh, there, uh, for referring back to Honorable Unika, uh, Mr. Deish. With that, colleagues, any more comments or questions? Um, I know that this was a, anybody that's listening in right now, we're, are, uh, in a committee work session. Navajo Housing Authority CEO, Mr. Frank Deish, is answering questions from colleagues regarding, uh, some funding that was received. Part of the CARES Act can reference twenty-two point three million dollars, uh, in that, and how those dollars were, uh, presented and how the Navajo Housing Authority, uh, actually presented their plan back to Housing, uh, and Urban Development, or HUD. And it seems like that Indian Housing Plan was approved, uh, yesterday, and that's what they're going to be moving forward with. Uh, so again, uh, colleagues, if I want to call, there's anybody else that's listening or have a comment from Mr. Deish and his team right now regarding any of those questions or funds, right now, is a chance to ask. If not, Chairman Nez? Chairman Nez, are you up there? Chairman Nez?
Uh, yes, sir.
Chairman Nez, you mind taking over, because I got one or two questions to ask?
Sure. Um, go ahead, Honorable Speaker Damon, ask you a question, sir.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you to everyone that's still listening and logged on right now and, uh, continuing to, uh, adhere to the dialogue that we're having. And, uh, thank you, Mr. Deish, for you and your team, uh, for putting together this plan that's in place. I know that it comes to fruition, that, uh, that this plan has, uh, just been recently approved and is going to be rolled out. My first question is actually, uh, out of reference to the CARES Act and the twenty-two point three million dollars. I just wanted to see if Navajo Housing Authority applied for any PPP, uh, funds, uh, through the federal government. And that's that payroll protection program dollars. I know some of our other enterprises receive some of those funds, and I just want to see if Navajo Housing Authority, uh, actually got any of those dollars. Uh, second, I know that you did a rundown on the twenty-two point three million dollars, uh, that was requested, uh, through USDA, and seems that that request was approved and, and it's been approved by HUD and issued that twenty-two point three million dollars to Navajo Housing Authority. But in reference to the Nahaza funding, it seems like there's a thirty million dollars NHA is currently reprogramming, uh, utilizing those FY 2020, uh, Indian Housing Block Grant Dollars. Oh, my one question on that is, where are those dollars being reprogrammed from, or what were those dollars initially for, for that thirty million? And next, uh, what is your plan for that thirty million? Because it seems in here that the twenty-three, or to the twenty-two point three million dollars is, is broken down extensively in here, but the thirty million dollars isn't. I just wanted to see what you're looking at, at identifying that. And then, um, I'll go ahead and come back to a follow up question after that. Uh, but those are my initial questions and seeing if, uh, uh, we can go ahead and get some direction on that, uh, Mr. CEO.
Um, thank you, Honorable Speaker, for that question. Uh, Mr. Deish, could you please answer?
Uh, Honorable, uh, Speaker Damon, thank you for that question. Uh, we're, uh, right in the middle of reprogramming the, uh, funds from 2020. Uh, the reason we are doing that is, uh, we have contractors that have, have not come back on board for the reasons I mentioned earlier. And so, uh, a lot of the work is really slow in starting back up. So just so you're aware, uh, that's where, uh, we've reprogrammed those funds. The Board of Commissioners authorized the, uh, reprogramming of those funds, uh, thirty million dollars to assist the Navajo Nation in, uh, the areas that I, I provided. So what, what, what we intend to do is increase the value, dollar value, in each one of those categories. Once the reprogramming is done, then the amounts will be, uh, uh, elevated and, and you'll see, uh, uh, where we're going to apply those funds. So what you have right now in front of you is, uh, is the breakout. It'll just increase, uh, by that amount, sir.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead. Honorable Speaker Damon, follow up question?
Thank you, Mr. Portem Chair. Uh, Chair Nez, uh, my follow up question, I guess, uh, again, back to, uh, the first question I had, and that was, uh, outside the scope of the twenty-two point three or the thirty million. And that was, I, I, I just wanted to see if Navajo Housing Authority requested or received any of the PPP funds, and that's a, a payroll protection program, federal dollars. Uh, I didn't get a response to that one. The, the second question is that thirty million dollars, how soon, uh, do you think that, uh, you'll be showing us an update or showing the council an update, or at least the Resource and Development Committee an update on, uh, where those dollars will be reassessed or actually redeposited or reallocated into each one of these line items that are broken down? That's just a follow up.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker Damon. Uh, Mr. Deish?
Honorable Speaker Damon, uh, yes, as soon as, uh, uh, we, uh, make those adjustments, uh, we'll, uh, submit the document again, and then, uh, the funds will be received and we're creating a separate Wells Fargo account to track the expenditures of those funds.
Here.
Okay. And then last, last one. Oh, sorry, Chairman.
Uh, go ahead, Honorable Speaker Damon.
Uh, my, my last question, uh, Mr. Deish, uh, again, is goes back to the, your Navajo Housing Plan, that, that CARES funding. In there, um, in your response to item number two, it says, "Emergency Temporary Rental Assistance for Low-Income Indian Households." This basically gives, uh, something like your, um, Section Eight program or your voucher program, and it seems like your, your goal is to help to fifty families. How and when are those dollars going to be available? And who? And how are you, is Navajo Housing Authority going to be working together and allocating that? Is that through the HMOs or is that just directly through, uh, your central office programs? And for each one of these other areas, too, I know that you're going to be giving money, three point five million dollars to three of the, uh, to the elderly homes. But some of these other areas is that when you're breaking down some of these other dollars specifically, uh, just as, just as in, in case, let's say your prevention number eight, emergency temporary housing for non-low income Indian households. This is actually helping individuals like currently is what we needing. Uh, if there's individuals that are needing, that can't go home because they're going back home, and the only place that they have is back to, to, basically to their home where they have their families there and everything, and they tested positive for COVID-19, who can they call to get portions of these funds and how soon will these, of, these dollars be available? Because it says in here that you're, you're allocated four hundred and fifty, I don't know if this is families or fifty individuals, uh, but let's say if it's four hundred and fifty individuals, who do they, who and how are you guys going to roll out these different initiatives? Because this is definitely a program right now that I could see we could utilize across the Navajo Nation immediately, especially for those individuals that don't have anywhere else to go. And if they're wanting to quarantine and if NHA is looking to help assist in those, uh, that initiative to where NHA will pray directly to a third party owner, operator of renting a room out for them while they're quarantining. How soon and how quickly are these going to be available? Again, uh, another one that's, uh, I can see that's down there. I just, I remember Honorable Nate Brown was having to clean a, a house out. Him and some volunteers cleaned out a, a unit, um, uh, there in, uh, his area that he was representing. And your response on responding ten for emergency health services, testing, cleaning, and PP for non-low income households. It seems like non-low income households, you're looking to help out two hundred and fifty. On there, it says, "Acquiring an on-call biocleaning service for NHA facilities and public rental and homeownership housing." How soon are these programs going to be available, uh, for our people to start calling in, seeing who and who's going to be responsible for these areas? Is this going to be allocated to each one of the HMOs? Or again, is this something that's just going to be addressed directly from the main, uh, resource, uh, which is here in Windarok? That's going to be allocated those funds so that we can go ahead and get this information out? Because a lot of this can address a lot of the needs currently that's being, uh, questioned right now across the whole Navajo Nation. So that, that, that's just my question, Mr. Deish.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker Damon. Uh, Mr. Deish, may you please, uh, answer? Thank you.
Uh, Chairman, uh, I'm. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Honorable Speaker Damon, uh, regarding the, uh, Section Eight, uh, that opportunity is available now. They can, they can apply and go through the, uh, NHA, uh, protocol. So that's the first one. Then, uh, uh, the second, uh, question was, we are, uh, in the process of procuring, uh, cleaning services. And, uh, what we want to do is get a cleaning service that will ensure that, uh, there, there are various levels of cleaning service. And so one group can come in and just, uh, spray down and clean. Then they have forensic cleaning. And so, uh, there are different levels based on, uh, how bad, uh, the facility was compromised. And so we're procuring that service right now. Uh, we're competing amongst, uh, uh, the organizations, Navajo organizations, as well as, uh, non-Navajo organizations, to see who can fulfill, uh, that requirement. And so once, uh, uh, we, uh, get through that process and make selection, then we go through the standard protocol of, uh, having the, uh, uh, appropriate committees or, or, uh, members, uh, approve the procurement based on the dollar value, and that's how it will be executed. Uh, Mr. Speaker. Chairman Nez, sir.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Deish. Um, Honorable, um, do you have another follow up question there?
Yes, uh, thank you, Portem Chair. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Deish, for giving me some time again today. My last question is, uh, again, I just wanted to see if, uh, Navajo Housing Authority reached out to, uh, um, as an entity, uh, as a, as one of the Navajo Nation's entities to, if you guys, your organization was eligible, or if you did receive any PPP, which is that Payroll Protection Program dollars. That's just my last question.
Mr. Deish?
Uh, Chairman Nez, uh, and then Honorable Speaker Damon, uh, very astute in asking the question, uh, absolutely correct. Uh, as soon as the opportunity, excuse me, opportunity came up and because, uh, uh, we assisted, uh, the general population, our customers, then that I say. Uh, I did. You go. I want you. I'm. I beg you. I want to. You. Me. Aye. I say. Yaha. I will. I can. That's. I'm. I'm. So we had rent relief for, uh, a lot of our customers because of what they were encountering. And so, uh, based on, uh, the loss of that specific income that, uh, uh, Chairwoman, um, or, uh, Council Delegate Newton was asking me about that question, uh, what are you doing with, uh, the income that's coming in, uh, for operating costs? And so to cover those costs and to pay for, uh, our employees, uh, we went ahead and applied for PPP from, uh, Wells Fargo. And it took a little bit of time. It took, uh, quite a bit of effort on the cadre of professionals here at, uh, Navajo Housing Authority, and, uh, we were able to secure that. And, uh, right now, we're going through the process of getting it, uh, allocated to the appropriate location. Uh, Honorable Speaker Damon, uh, Chairman Nez, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Certainly appreciate your response and your, what you do for NHA as well as the Navajo people. Honorable Speaker Damon, any other questions, sir?
Uh, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll hand the gavel back to you, sir.
Thank you, uh, Chairman Nez, uh, and thank you again, uh, Mr. Deish. Colleagues, uh, if there is no other comments, questions, I'll go back to the floor. Once, twice. With that, Mr. Deish, thank you very much for your insight and your presentation. I know that, uh, you, you're, uh, continuing to move forward in this effort, and, uh, I know that, uh, you're, uh, continuing to move forward in this effort and, uh, thank you for your team. Not only working on the CARES funds, uh, but your everyday initiatives through the Nahaza funding or the nineteen thirty-seven, uh, funds and more importantly, thank you very much for your team uh, effort in, uh, making sure we get that audit out of, uh, complete too as well. I know that's something that's coming down the pipeline again. Uh, so I thank you very much for your time today, uh, and thank you, uh, for all your team members there that are on the front lines helping assist at this time too as well. I think I might have one more individual, uh, so is that Vice Chair Walker?
That is.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Speaker. Uh, last but not least, I want to make some comments, a few of them, I'll be brief. Uh, yeah, um, although my colleagues that are on the call that have, uh, made comments and asked questions and made this, uh, a very, um, worthwhile, uh, afternoon as far as, uh, housing resources are concerned. And then where our nation and our tribal housing entity, eh, where, where, where they are and their plans. What they call other presenters though, Mr. Davis, uh, CEO of NHA, uh, should say. In the bit, uh, need what's up with us should say. Now what they call the way, uh, I think of each one's under the bunch. Luke to Lonnie Lake Cameron, coal mine, Bird Springs, eh, what in they call. So, um, yeah, uh, you know, what now do, uh, but then the next you give though. And that then when you give though, so I need to then when you give. I call she hey, you can do that was up there. He the, uh, each one's I need to go, I just seen, it's a hard to see. To, uh, the speaker and then to my, uh, colleagues also. So let, let's also remember that people, Navajo people, Navajo families, heads of households, they are also willing. They are also willing and able to do self-help, to, to do things on their own also. When it comes to, um, a building their Chaha'oh or their sweat lodge or their, their, their sheep horse corral. What the, the housing, you get, uh, what the, uh, getting text messages from people. Saying, don't forget, we can do things on our own too. Sometimes we just need help. We just need that small contribution. Or we need, we need a big, big boost, um, some, some funding. Uh, not now, now I don't need a, uh, ten unit, um, um, ten unit facility. not now, now I don't need a ten-unit, um, um, ten-unit facility.